Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Hutchinson City Council meeting for Tuesday, May 8th, 2018. Approve the council, approve the council agenda and any agenda additions or corrections?
Mayor, council, I don't have any additions or corrections at this time.
I'll move to approve.
Second. Motion by Mary, second by John to approve the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose Carey, implications from River of Hope Church. Good evening.
Well, you'd think that.
Yeah.
It's not.
It's not.
It's not.
No, Laura could not be here tonight.
Oh, okay.
And she asked me, that's all right. She asked me if I would sub for her and I said, sure. So I'm Deb Wachus, I'm the pastor of Vineyard United Methodist. And I thought, there are various ways of praying and I found something that I thought I would share with you today about our many communities. So with all due respect to the mayor and the council, let us pray. Almighty God, you do not create us to live alone and you have not made us all alike. We thank you for the varied societies into which we come, by which we are brought up, and through which we discover your purpose for our lives. We pray for our families with whom we live day by day. May this most searching test of our character not find us broken and empty. By all that we do and say, help us to build up the faith and confidence of those we love and when we quarrel, help us to forgive quickly. We pray for the places where we work, but there may be workers who have no need to be ashamed. We ask to be reliable rather than successful, worthy of trust rather than popular, whether those we work with may be many or few. May we help to give them the sense that they are personally wanted and cared for. We pray for the communities to which we belong, that we may be good citizens. Make us willing to accept responsibility when we are called to it. Make us willing also to give place to others, that they too may have their opportunity. Grant that our influence may be good and not evil. We pray for the generation to which we belong, those with whom we share a common fund of memory, common standards of behavior, and a common attitude towards the world. But we also pray for those generations to which we do not belong. And we ask, oh God, that we would have the opportunity to share and to learn so that we may become as well-versed in the generations of others as we are in our own. Almighty God, into whose world we come and from whose world finally we must go, we thank you for all those people, great and humble, who have maintained the fabric of the world's life in the past and left us a great inheritance. May we take up and encourage what is good and hand it on to those who come after, believing that our work in your name will not be wasted or in vain. Amen.
Thank you. Next, the pledges of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Recognizations of gifts, donations, and community service to the city. Does anybody have anything? All right, we do have a couple proclamations. First one is Building Safety Month. So I do, in witness, therefore, I undo, set my hand this 8th of May, 2018, for Building Safety Month. And we have a proclamation for Arbor Day, so month, in the month of May, 2018, as Arbor Month in the city of Hutchinson. With that, Kyle, you have a couple gentlemen to introduce to us?
Yes. They've been practicing their plans. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. I'm Kyle Dimmer, the city building official. This evening I'd like to introduce to you two of the newest employees in the planning, building, and zoning department. Just stand up.
Come up to the podium, please. Come up to the podium, please. They can introduce themselves, Kyle.
Dave Holquist and Ken Nelson. Dave is the building inspector and Ken, excuse me, Ken is the building inspector, Dave is our inspector, and Dave is one of the primary duties, working with the city's rental registration and inspection program, and Ken is more focused on a lot of the construction, building permits, and planning proportions.
So backgrounds, construction? I don't think I have any black and blue fingers.
Well, I have all of mine yet, so I don't know if that makes me a good carpenter in the day or not, but I started out out of high school, working for a contractor. It was an older, older gentleman and his brothers. When they got close to retirement, I decided to go on my own. I was a contractor for 13 years prior to that, so, excuse me, since then, so that's my experience in the building field, so.
And you got smart and you got out of it.
Yes, I see a lot of these old guys slumped over and missing fingers and I decided, I don't want to do that, so.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My background is mainly in commercial. I spent three years here in Hutch, working for Hasland Construction, and then about 14 in the Salt Lake Valley, working for a larger construction, commercial company.
One more guy.
I'm glad you, you know, came to introduce yourselves because with the proclamation for the month, I just, I was going to ask if, you know, where things were at with that, so.
Building Safety Month.
Yeah, so.
Things are very busy, so I appreciate the council and mayor taking that step to make the proclamations. So I was thinking about that for Building Safety Month. Building codes sometimes get the bad name of just being an enforcement agency, but we strive to be more of a tool because that's seldom recognized when something really goes wrong and don't see all the effects of that when things are going right because nothing's happening, so, thank you.
I was gonna, I don't know if you followed stuff at the Capitol, in the House, there was a very anti-building regulation, legislation proposed in the House, just if people haven't been aware of that.
Yes.
Another, another, you know, attempt to, well theoretically, an attempt to lower the cost of building houses, but, you know, anti-sprinkler, anti-a lot of fire code stuff, finding and zoning regulations, so.
Yeah, it's a continual effort, definitely.
Well, definitely, we don't want unsafe houses.
No, absolutely not. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
See you guys around.
Public comment, if anybody wants to adjust the council? All right, approval of minutes, we have regular meeting minutes of April 24th, 2018.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Second. Motion by Chad, second by Steve to approve the minutes. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose Carey, consent agenda. A is appointment of Kim Pearson to the police commission to May 2020, completing Joe Peel's term. B is consideration for approval of non-waiver of tort liability limits for general liability. C is consideration for approval of renewing food vendor license to Ralph Mal, Germanas?
I know I killed one.
Germanas, yeah. D is consideration for approval issuing temporary liquor license to a sustainable farming association for Minnesota Garlic Festival being held August 11th, 2018, at the McCloud County Fairgrounds. E is consideration for approval of items for 2018 pavement management program, leading number four, project number 18-4. And under there, we have resolution number 14888, resolution ordering improvements and preparation of plans and specifications, and resolution number 14889, resolution approving plans and specification and ordering advertisements for bids. And F is claims and appropriation contract payments, register A. Is there anything anybody wants to pull up? E, all righty, correct that. Anything else?
Make a motion to approve the rest of it.
I'll second.
Motion by Chad, second by Mary to approve the balance. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose Carey, Steve.
Just on E, I think number two is worded wrong. Says calling for bids, it's actually just the hearing. Is that correct?
Yeah, actually, the two resolutions, what's in the packet is correct, what's noted on the agenda is incorrect, actually both of the descriptions of the resolutions. So 14888 should be resolution ordering preparation of report on improvement, and then the following resolution, 14889, should be resolution receiving report and calling hearing on the improvement, which reflects what's in the packet.
Yeah, just a typo.
Okay. Just wanted to note it for the record, just since we are talking about it, where you're talking about reconstruction of those roads, is that actually reconstruction or mill overlay partial?
It's still being developed, this is coming, I think, a little late in the season. We'll talk more about this at the next week's, at the actual public hearing, obviously, but this is a little bit in reaction to another project not being delivered this year, so we're still developing the exact approach. We're well into the design, albeit the scope, I will mention this, I think the scope will be changing from the streets that are listed. I don't believe we'll be doing, addressing all four of those roadways due to cost, funding limitations, and we'll talk more about that in a couple weeks.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve with the noted corrections for the actual agenda items.
Second. Motion by Steve, second by John to approve both resolutions. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose Carey, approval of consent agenda number two. Chad, I believe you have a check?
I do.
Motion to approve register B.
I'll second it. Motion by John, second by myself.
Chad standing.
And Chad abstaining. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose Carey. Approval of consent agenda number two. Chad, I believe you have a check?
I do.
Motion to approve register B.
I'll second it. Motion by John, second by myself.
Chad standing.
And Chad abstaining. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose Carey. We do have public hearings. Dr. Mulder?
Those public hearings are scheduled for six, so we.
For six, we got 15 minutes.
I won't take that.
Okay. You did say that out loud, you know.
We heard it.
And I do want to assure you that it's not my intention to, we're at least one council meeting a month going forward.
Seems like I've been here lately. But this is our annual report to the city, which was a requirement when our, under our previous lease agreement. As I understand, our current relationship, it is not a requirement per se, but something we committed to continue to do going forward. I think it's a good idea. Technically, you still are the leaseholder, and so while there are no metrics that we're measuring with this new relationship, it's still something that we want to keep you informed on and recognize the importance of that relationship of Hutchinson Health and the city. So just want to review the services we provided in 2017. There were 2,129 inpatient admissions, slightly down from the previous year. Inpatient surgical cases, 529, that was also a little bit lower than 16. Same-day surgery cases, those were higher, those were up to 2,844. There has been a transition, there has been a transition from more inpatient, less inpatient cases to more outpatient cases over the past few years. Emergency department visits were down a bit to 8,124. On the one hand, that being down could be seen as a bad thing, on the other hand, it could be seen as we're doing a better job of keeping people healthy, so we prefer to think of it that way. Deliveries were down a bit, they were over 316, 240 in 17. So far, we're tracking for 2018 to be closer back up to that 300 mark. I don't know what happened in 17, I don't want to speculate. Hutch Health Clinic visits, over 81,000, that was up fairly significantly from 17, or 16, rather, mental health clinic visits, 15,500, Dassel, 4,500, Orthopedic Clinic, 8,400 visits, outpatient imaging, so that's x-rays, CT scans, ultrasounds, those types of things, 28,764. Rehab, that's like physical therapy, occupational therapy, those types of things, 21,382. And then 45,063 folks had lab appointments, so that's a lot of pokes. Our financial performance in 2017, we had net operating revenue just over $89 million and our total operating expenses were just over $88 million with an operating income of $981,700. Our net income, which includes non-operating income, which in 17 included investments, which was a very good year, that's mostly responsible for this number of 2.7, nearly 2.8 million. So that gave us an operating margin which doesn't include that non-operating income of 1.1 percent. That's better than being negative, it's not where we want to be. We ultimately would like to be at a 3 percent operating margin. Days cash on hand is 152, which is significantly higher than we've historically been, so that's very good. What that means is if we suddenly stopped getting any income whatsoever, how long can we operate with business as usual? So we've added some new providers in the last year. Dr. Andrew Nichols is an allergy and immunologist, and he started seeing patients in April. He's coming from Park Nicollet. Dr. Jonathan Shelver is a pulmonologist, he's a lung specialist, we've never had one of those before. He's also from Park Nicollet and he's coming a couple times a month. We're excited to have those two and they are just the start of what we expect to be a number of new specialists coming from Park Nicollet, so stay tuned for that. Mandy Nordgren is an AUD, that's a doctoral audiology, it's like a doctoral level person who provides audiology services. And then Kayla Olson, licensed independent clinical social worker, so she's a mental health therapist in the outpatient clinic. Dr. Noah Retka is a family physician. Dr. Sarah McKay is a family physician. Dr. Lavanya Bupathi is a hospitalist. And those are some of the new providers.
What is a?
A hospitalist? What is a hospitalist? What they, hospitalist as a specialty has existed for probably the last 25 to 30 years. We adopted them about five years ago. All they do is take care of patients who are admitted to the hospital. So in the olden days, your family doctor saw you in the clinic, and then when you went in the hospital, they saw you in the hospital and took care of that whole spectrum of care. That got to be more challenging as hospitalized patients got to be more complicated and complex. We used to admit patients for their complete physicals, believe it or not. We don't do that anymore, they have to be pretty sick. And it's also very inefficient if you're trying to see patients over in the clinic and the nurses are calling you from over in the hospital and there's family there and you need to run over. So the hospitalists are dedicated to just being in the hospital, taking care of hospitalized patients, and that's, that's worked out very well. So Dr. Bupathy is the latest addition to that hospital.
So how many of those do you have on staff?
Right now, we have three. We signed another couple, they're husband, wife, both hospitalists, they will start in September, so we're excited about that. Another new physician coming in July, Dr. Amy Ellingson Itzen, she is an OBGYN, and so Dr. Emily Zulik right now is our only OBGYN, so we're excited about having Amy come. They're coming to us from Duluth, she practices at Essentia there. She was a classmate of my son at Gust Davis and in medical school, so a lot of connections, and they also have good friends on the medical staff at Hutchinson already, so there's a lot of connections there. Her husband is an ED physician and he'll be working with us too, so more to come about that, but not for right now, making some changes in how we staff the ED. And then community benefit, so this as a 501(c)(3) not-for-profit charitable organization, we have to demonstrate that we're providing non-reimbursed community, community benefit. And so we had charity care in 2017 of just shy of $266,000. Community subsidized service costs, those are things like classes, education, support groups and so on that we provide in the community with a total of 134,000. Unreimbursed Medicaid services and the Medicaid surcharge, so there's 2 percent surcharge on all hospital revenue that's been in place now for, what, 15 years, that we pay, and then also unreimbursed Medicaid services, so the cost of services that we provide, that is over and above what Medicaid reimburses us, that amounts to 3.8 million. Education and workforce development, we had a lot of, have a lot of nursing students from a number of different schools that come through for training, Ridgewater among them. We also have medical students and medical residents that come through from time to time. Our Minnesota Care Tax, actually, that's 1.2 million, and then cash and kind donations, 119,000. So our total cost of community contributions was 5.8 million, and that amounts to 6.73 percent of our total expenses. Other community benefits, community building and other benefit costs, those are things like our wellness coordinators that provide wellness activities and promote wellness activities out in the community, costs in excess of Medicare payments, so what it costs us, more than what Medicare pays us, is 6.7 million, and then other care provided without compensation, that's things like bad debt and so on, is about 1.3 million. So that's, that, this page doesn't really count in the community benefit calculation, this is just for your information. Health Partners affiliation is the big thing, it was finalized on 4/1/18, and I'll tell you all of the things that changed on 4/2/18?
Nothing.
Nothing changed on 4/2. It was the beginning of a long process, things are changing. As I noted before, we have new physicians coming out already from Park Nicollet that we wouldn't have had access to before, and there's a lot of connections being made. This Friday, all of our leadership team will be traveling down to the river center in St. Paul to meet with all of the leaders from throughout Health Partners, which is about 2,000 people, so getting to know some of our new best friends. What we're finding in this, in this process with Health Partners and Park Nicollet in particular, is a lot of flexibility and a lot of collaboration and not much prescribing, so it's, it's been a great process so far and we continue to be very excited and confident about what a plus this is going to mean for healthcare in the community. So I promised I wouldn't go 15 minutes and I'll open it up for any questions.
I just had one, you know, where you're talking about the services provided, you know, we've had urgent care now for, how long's that been?
We've had urgent care for many years, it was only though during like regular office hours, so we extended to later in the evening, that was about maybe three years ago, and then we extended to seven days a week, that's been just about two years now.
Two years.
And so that's been very successful, very, very much used, very much needed by the community. We will be moving into brand-new urgent care quarters, which would be across the waiting area from the clinic now where the pharmacy and the coffee shop used to be. Sadly, coffee shop got moved, but there'll be a whole new urgent care section there, hopefully opening sometime in the fall.
So are those numbers kind of in, mixed in to what you provide?
Yes, they are included in the clinic visits, yes, and one of the reasons why the clinic visits are up.
So, real happy with everything so far, that's good to hear.
Very much so, yeah.
Few jokes about starting on April 1st, April Fool's Day?
We've preferred to use more the Easter analogy than the April Fools analogy.
I do think it's an advantage to be partnered, I mean, look what's out, look at the doctors that are going to be coming here now that we've never had before.
Yep.
So it'll be good for the community.
Indeed.
Anything else?
Hope not to be out there in the near future. Although I did get a phone call on Friday that reminded me that I had to have a procedure that had been done 10 years ago.
And that's a very good idea.
Schedule.
It's the one procedure that we know prevents cancer deaths, so, yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Mulder. We can go into that. Go ahead. Yeah, the two. The public hearing.
It's 6 o'clock.
Issuing brewing tap room license to Bobbering Brewers, Bobbering Bobber Brewing Company, LLC. Boy, that's a big word.
Gary, you'll never be able to pass.
No, I, how many times have I tried to say that?
Do you need me up there?
No.
Well, that marketer.
Sure, so thank you very much, Mayor, council members. As you pointed out, it is a tongue twister to say. Tonight is the Brew Pub application for Bobbering Bobber Brewing Company, LLC. We have received all of the.
Oh, sure, he says.
He says it the first time. Very slowly. We have received all of the information required for the license, as noted in the memorandum before you. Background check is completed by the Hutchinson Police Services, came back with no problems. You see the license that was completed on behalf of the state, it doesn't seem to be to granting the license, but because it involves alcohol within the city limits of Hutchinson under our ordinance, a hearing is required and certainly this would be the time to invite any, as far as the granting of the alcohol license.
Open up for a public comment? State your name and address, please.
Oh, I know the drill, Gary. Dan Hart, 255 North High Drive, Northwest 116 Hutchinson. I appreciate you guys' time again, this has been a very long road. I think I stood in front of you three and a half years ago asking to get Brew Pub and brewery licenses into the mix, so we've, we've been persistent and we're finally there. I appreciate all the time that you guys have put in and, you know, I'm glad that we're able to finally be at this state of asking for a on and off sale license plus a Sunday liquor license as well. We're hoping to be a big part of the community. I only have, I have one person that I need to introduce, it's one of our neighbors. She came to me yesterday with a concern for lighting in the back of the property, so I wanted to make sure that she came down and voiced her concerns to you guys about that. So on that note, what I'll do is I'll let her come up and speak. You got something, Gary?
Yes, we did have somebody talk about the noise, about, is it from your coolers or what is?
The heat exchanger, which run, it's an oversized air conditioner, basically. And what it does is it runs the glycol, which glycol is food-grade antifreeze, runs through piping on the interior of the building to keep all of our tanks at a specific temperature. And we do have it in the works to put a fence around that. As of right now, it's.
Put a noise barrier.
Yeah, so it'll direct the noise up rather than letting it just spread out. The chiller itself is the exact same thing as your home central air conditioner, except two to three times bigger. That's, but that's what it is. It puts off a hum just like your normal central air conditioner does. And we were approached yesterday about that as well. And we have spoken with the people and said we will be putting a fence. It is in our plans to put a fence around it.
What's the timeline?
Kyle's already left. I don't know if I need to get a new building permit for that fence or not, but, you know.
What's the timeline on that, Dan?
We should be about two weeks is what my guess is. You know, the frost is just kind of coming out of the ground, so we can finally get some poles in the ground. You know, the post office calls me once a week about a mailbox and I haven't been able to put a post in the ground for that either. So, you know, we're, now that the frost is out, that's high on our agenda list to get done. And we want to have everything completed for having our final building inspection by Kyle before we open to the public. So, that's, that's by the end of the month. We're shooting for the Wednesday before Memorial Day. Memorial Day weekend is what we're shooting for with your guys' approval on our liquor license, obviously, so.
So, Dan, if you put that fence around that unit, is it just going to push the noise upward?
It's, it's supposed to. We're, we'll put a fence above it that, or around it that will go up a number of feet above the actual condensing unit where the fan is. And it's when the fan kicks on that it makes the noise, because the fan is circling so fast and it's got a big grate around it. So, when that kicks on, it makes a hum, because it's pushing all that air through those grates. And that's the hum that's coming off of it. And we'll put a fence that's a little bit higher than the unit. And then, that fence will have like those plastic slats that go through the chain link. And what that'll do is the sound will come off of that, hit those plastic barriers, and it'll divert it back towards the machine and then up rather than out. So, that's what the intent is.
Okay, so if I have a two-story house and I'm right next to you, am I going to hear that more?
I don't think that you'll hear it more. What it'll do is it'll prevent it from going out to the right or to the left or to the east or to the west. It will protrude it up. And after it goes up there, I mean, there isn't a whole lot I can do about it. You've got a building like this that's got the heating and AC units up on the roof. Where does the sound go from that? I mean, I've, I've got heating and AC units on the roof as well. I can't divert it any higher to the air, you know. So, if I can get it to go straight up, it should alleviate most of the problem. I mean, it's no more noise than my house next to yours with the AC running and your AC is on my deck side of my home. I, I mean, I can't help, I can do the best I can with it. So, we'll, we'll try our best and if there's a different solution, we'll look at a different solution if it's still not fixing the problem.
Okay.
Yeah. I'm kind of familiar with some noise mitigation stuff, so I don't know if the chain link, you know, if the plastic will work the best, but you can try.
It, it makes like a solid, almost a solid barrier. We can look at doing a, a solid fence as well. I mean, I'm not opposed to that. It's.
You know, sound's at any material, but the other thing is I think it will help because right now, I think the building probably bounce reflects.
It does.
The noise to the north towards some of the houses. So, I think in that respect, it'll help.
I'm hoping that it'll, it'll divert it, most of it to the, up into the atmosphere and it won't be as big of a deal.
Sure.
You know, we obviously have to try it first, you know. We don't want to reinvent the wheel. We just want to find out if we need to add a couple extra spokes, you know, so.
So, you hope to open by Memorial Day is what you said?
Memorial Weekend, the Wednesday before Memorial Day is what our goal is and we'll actually be closed Memorial Day in respect and honor. I'm a very big patriot, so I want to make sure that we aren't open on those days. So, we'll, we'll be closed that day, but we want to be open Wednesday through Sunday and then close Memorial Day in the Tuesday, because we don't open to the public Mondays and Tuesdays. So, we would be closed those two days, regroup and then reopen again on Wednesday on our normal hours.
Just had a thought for your back area there, you know, since it's that large parking lot or whatever is, maybe you want to plant some hop plants in there?
It would be, it would be great. There's, it's a lot of work at the point that we're at in this business adventure.
I thought it was kind of like a weed, so maybe it's just.
It's more, more work than it would be worth, but.
It was just a thought.
It would be nice to have the aesthetics. A lot of breweries do grow hops and it's just for aesthetics. They don't actually use them. There's too much work involved in them, trimming the vines constantly. You have to pick them at a certain time. You can't, you can't pick the hop buds themselves. You have to cut the whole vine and then you have to go through it and you have 48 hours once you've cut it to use them. It's, it becomes a massive pain in the butt, but, you know, there's been talks, you know.
Well, Dan, you got extra time.
I have so much of that, so much of that, let me tell you. Anything else?
Well, you were, you were talking about the street lighting or you wanted to?
Yes, yes. One of our neighbors has a concern about the lighting in the back, so I wanted to have her come down and talk to you guys about that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hi.
Name and address, please.
And I live at 115 Linden Avenue, southwest Hutchinson, Minnesota.
What was your name again?
Jessica Thorne. So, I went over to introduce myself to Dan and my next-door neighbor Stacy had the concern about the noise, which Dan so kindly offered to attempt to fix. Hopefully, that will help alleviate that. My concern wasn't the noise. There are a couple of bright lights that beam down on our house and that's just a matter of adjusting those lights. So, Dan, his partners offered to do that as well, which we really appreciate. He did mention that the city was considering putting streetlights back there. And that parking lot is exactly across from my home, so that would create even more lights, which we already have the room darkening curtains and shades. So, we're hoping that there's enough light back there, which I think there is, to avoid having extra streetlights put in if at all possible.
Yeah, originally, when the conditional use came up, when I went back, you know, it seemed very dark there. And I haven't been back now since to see how maybe the lighting has gotten adjusted a little bit, but.
It's pretty lit up.
Okay, so.
So, you're in the yellow house?
Yes, yeah. It's a rental.
And I will say, just to address that comment, I know that was a comment that was expressed by the council when we went through the conditional use permit about, you know, we potentially may have to add more lighting to that, that street. I don't believe it's currently in the works, but I know that was a concern that was expressed at the time of the original public hearing, so.
Sure, street lighting would be a whole lot more subtle than the overhead bright lights, so we just thought we'd come down. We're, we're really glad to have him as our neighbor, so.
Well, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
I think with the conditional use, when I talked to Dan about it again, was that staff would work with the ownership to.
Yeah, the, the lighting for the conditional use was to add more lighting to the north side of the building and potentially the overflow parking area. And that's, I think, what her concern is, is for more lighting on that back part of the building, because it would shine right towards her property. You know, the streetlights that are on that, in that area, all the single pole with the one light on top, they don't put off a ton of light. Most of that light goes either straight down or straight up. And by adding extra lighting to the rear of the building, which we are changing all the bulbs in the current lighting that's on the back of the building, but if we add extra lighting, that's what her concern is about, is adding more lighting to make that parking lot more visible, which would, you know, really affect her house, so.
Well, as we know, there's a lot of different lighting options and directional lighting, so that's where I think just working with staff is the best opportunity to come to a good solution that doesn't get overbearing for the neighbors, obviously, too, so.
I don't believe it's a street lighting issue, though. I think it's really, what Mr. Hart's alluding to, is it a, a sight lighting issue to be had?
Yeah.
You know, and that ties back to the conditional use permit.
Yeah, I'm working with staff just to come up with something that works.
Being, being neighbor to the.
I've got to keep all them, all them happy.
Well, I'm, I'm right by the VFW park and when they play baseball, there's that, it's like, I don't have to have any lights on in my house. That comes right through, so I'm hoping that the leaves come up pretty fast, because that usually dulls it down a little bit, but, so. Anything else, Dan, for us?
I don't have anything else. I'm excited to finally, you know, we started brewing a couple of weeks ago with getting our state license, our state brewer's license, so we're excited to be a part of the community. So, I'm hoping to be open soon and I appreciate you guys' time. Thank you.
Well, we thank you for working with the neighbors.
I want to work with everybody, that's the key. Thank you.
Any other comment?
Mayor and council, you know, I think the, obviously, the public impact was, or feedback was great, but I will say a lot of the comments were directed towards the conditional use permit and not the liquor license that's in front of you tonight. And so, I think it's just something important to keep that separated, is that really those are all condition, conditional use permit requirements that, that were discussed and simple, I would say, planning, zoning, noise, you know, when we talk about the noise, that's getting back to our noise and nuisance ordinance related and, and just trying to make sure we rein in that the discussion tonight is on the actual alcohol liquor license and permit. And a lot of the comments were directed towards what I would consider to be the conditional use permit aspect of that.
And at the Pub Planning Commission meeting on, on the public hearing for the conditional use permit, we did have some residents who were opposed to it happening there, but it, as Robert Hocky said so eloquently at the last planning commission, it fits in the box.
Right.
That's, you know, that's what planning is.
You know, and certainly, if it becomes a problem, that conditional use permit can be reviewed and adjusted accordingly, so.
But I know in a sense, there's noise, we've got, as you mentioned, the noise ordinance, we've got the nuisance ordinance, and so there's other avenues to address that.
I would say for the applicant, it's important that when we do get to that street light, or not the street light, but the lighting aspect is that that, just have that conversation with the staff. I think that's what the conditional use permit is stated, is that needs to be approved by staff. And I think the concerns of the shining lights into the neighbors, I think there's ways, comes from our cook head, and there's ways to mitigate that.
I think so. Ordinance specifically prohibits commercial lighting from shining on a house, or it's got to be downlighting.
Right.
Motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
I'll second.
Motion by Chad, seconded by Mary to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie?
I'll make a motion to approve the taproom license.
I'll second it. Motion by Chad, seconded by myself to approve the license. Any other comment?
Just want to say congratulations, Dan. It's been a long haul here.
Long road.
Appreciate it, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie?
You just have to get Kyle.
I just throw my hands up in the air and go, I don't know, I'm not a contractor. He works with me.
All right, we got 2018 Seal Coat Projects, letting number six, project number 18-6. Under there, we have resolution number 14886, resolution ordering improvements and preparation of plans and specifications. And B is resolution number 14887, resolution approving plans and specification and ordering advertisements for bids. Ken, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Yeah, as we've done the last so many, many years, now on a every-year basis, even years just by chance, we've been delivering a seal coating project throughout the community. And we are funding this now, or we have for many, many times now with infrastructure maintenance dollars, which are in essence, local government aid dollars, LGA dollars, and that was arrived, oh, probably 10 years, give or take ago. So, that brings us to 2018. And this is just a formality, having a, having a hearing for this project, which we do for, for every project that we publicly bid. This was, this is the drawing that's included within your packet. Obviously, I'm not going to get into a lot of detail here, but John, working with our pavement management program and also identifying streets, he can put in crack sealing and patching and some minor repair efforts to prep for a seal coating operation. We don't want to just seal coat a street that needs other work to be done prior to it being seal coated. So, there's a little bit of forethought, you know, bringing those, those pieces together. What, what's our pavement management program identifying? What can we allocate resources towards to prepare for this operation when it comes every two years? And then, we, we looked to bid a project right around $250,000. That's the, the amount that we allocate for this effort, $125,000 annually. With that, like I mentioned in the packet, we've identified a bid opening date of Monday, June 4th, and a construction window of June, starting June 18th until August 10th, shortly before the county fair. And we would recommend, council authors approve the resolutions in the packet and we'll be going out to bids here shortly. And we anticipate probably two to three bidders, as usual, you know, the, in that, that industry, the seal coating industry, they're, they're well aware that we deliver this program every other year and the, the magnitude of it.
So, can I ask a question?
Yep, go ahead. That's all I got.
On your drawing there, the map, the purple would be the seal coating streets?
Purple are the seal coating streets that are identified.
And then, the red marks or?
The red are the actual, the street names. Yeah, I could zoom in.
Oh, that is.
And it's, you know.
Oh, it is.
And it's somewhat, yeah, admittedly, it's somewhat of a shotgun approach and we're relying, John's relying on our pavement management information, what he can get ready that's in a satisfactory manner. We don't just want to get this in somewhat of a, you know, a regionalized section of town approach, because then it, you're not doing the right fix at, at the right time or the right maintenance effort at the right time. So, we put a lot of focus in that, because, you know, honestly, $250,000 every couple years isn't going to get us to seal coating every street every five to seven years, which is the industry standard or a lot of communities' goal. So, we have to be strategic about where these dollars are going and, and spending them in the right locations.
So, has the technology changed at all in the last?
Yeah, you might not know, that's a good question, Gary. Couple of years ago, it was the first time we did, we did a fog sealing over the top. So, it's still the, putting down the emulsified sealant oil, putting the chips over the top of that. We use a, it's a basalt. It comes out of Dresser, Wisconsin area, most of it. They call it trap rock. It's a hard, flatter rock. It's kind of purplish in color, you know, so we've been using that for years. And we put that down on the first application of oil, then they come over the top of it with what they call a fog seal. And urban areas, you know, a few years back, you know, we've seen our county, state. years back, you know, we've seen our county, state, you know, jurisdiction, highway jurisdictions using a fog seal, but the urban areas were all, I was concerned about tracking, you know, you put down that fog sealing on top, now you might have some tracking into driveways and this and that, but we managed this, John's managed to set up a real good traffic control spec, and it puts a lot on the contractor to do the work in a logical manner, and actually having a more shotgun approach is better, because then you're not just sealing a full section of town where people don't have other options to get around, you know, the street center have just been addressed, so, yeah, this will be the second time with that fog sealing approach, it's much better, we don't have the chips in the boulevards and, you know...
You don't have to sweep.
Yep, they don't have to sweep afterwards, you know, and then we don't displace a lot of the chips over the winter with the snowplow operations, usually that first winter, and they end up in the boulevards and...
So the fog sealing, does that kind of...
Locks them in even better.
Locks in and even goes down into the pavement a little bit, or?
Yep. They still sweep at the loose rock prior to the fog sealing application, and then it even further locks them in.
So typically, Kent, how long does that last, the sealing?
Yeah, rule of thumb is five to seven years, and it's kind of the industry standard if, you know, you were looking to do a regular program. We are doing other things, you know, John's been very, very good at this replay, this soy-based sealant, you know, that we've been doing for, what, over 10 years now? Yeah, and we've had a lot of success with that, and John was on the front end of utilizing that, and we've expanded that program a bit over the years and seen good results, so we're kind of balancing using this on some streets that are maybe a little older and still in good shape, and then relying more on the replay application with some of our younger streets, I'll say.
And the replay is the stuff, smells like oranges?
Yep, exactly.
Just like a, let's see, it would be a blood orange IPA.
Not that good.
Anything else, Kent?
That's it.
Open up for public comment.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Motion by Chad, second by John, to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
So Kent and John, you know, like some of the streets, you mentioned, you know, they need some work before you do the seal coating, so that's part of the project then, too? Like Second Avenue, I kind of think. Like Second Avenue, you know, you got that crack going down the...
Right. What I don't get done the year of, I'll do prior to the seal coat being done, so the repair of that crack, and then there's some areas where it's delaminated, the top, those will be filled in prior to the seal coating. Most of the streets that were highlighted for seal coating, I did that work over the last two years to prepare for this, so that's, it's kind of a three-year process, that we look forward to say, we think this will be a good candidate, and it gives us a couple of seasons to prepare for that, and again, early part of the season to get that done, so. I would expect that typically, we've been seeing most of the contract work being done in July. You know, we give them that window, so it's after the water carnival and before the fair, so, and typically, it's been in July for us, and a lot of those contractors make their way around the state, and so that's usually where we end up, so. I would expect this total project to take two days, so.
Carried. Anything else? Motion to approve both resolutions?
Sir, I'll second them both.
Motion by Steve, second by Chad, to approve both resolutions. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. John, guess you get to stay up, huh? Presentation of 2018 Pavement Management Report.
This isn't as much fun as thinking about a brewery, I guess, but it's important work that we're doing. This report will review the findings of our 2018 report, which includes the physical pavement condition surveys that were done late in 2017. There are 90.7 miles of street in Hutchinson, a little over 13 miles of those streets are under the jurisdiction of the county and the state, which leaves us with 77.4. That equates to 1.5 million square yards of pavement. That's a lot of pavement, 311 acres just in the streets, so that gives you a little, maybe a little bit better way of looking at it. Our pavement network has grown at a pace of about 1.5% over the last 20 years, and it grows by new streets being constructed, and also by transactions we have with the county or the state for turn-back streets, so. This does not include a lot of the other pavements the city has at their facilities, side, or the trail system, those kinds of things, parking lots are not included in there, but why do we do pavement management? The biggest reason is, if you think about it, one and a half million square yards of city-owned pavements, that would cost well over $100 million to rehabilitate. That's $7,200 per resident, and it's over $13,000 per employed person in the city, so this is big money that we're talking about. And with this kind of money on the line, pavement management makes a lot of sense. It allows us to identify some of the key issues that we have and to address them early and in a timely manner, and do our best to maximize the life and minimize the cost of these pavements. The concept of pavement management is addressing pavement maintenance needs at critical times, so if you look at the graph, on the bottom you have, on the horizontal axis, you have the age of the road, and on the vertical axis, you have the condition of the pavement. The pavement starts out, you know, at 100%, and then over a course of some years, it deteriorates, some additional distresses show up, and then we go in and do a maintenance project, and that just kicks the life out, the curve of the life out to the right. So our goal is to utilize low-cost maintenance treatments to the extent possible to extend the life of the pavements. There will become a time in every pavement's life when the lower-cost maintenance options are no longer feasible. What is that number? I don't know. It depends on so much of what's underneath the pavement, how the pavement is used, what kind of traffic is on there, so there's a lot of variables, and so that, this is just a way of communicating what the concept is, and our goal has been to maintain pavements in the range of 65 to 75. How did we come to that? Quite honestly, we were about right in the middle of that when we started this process 20-some years ago, and not a lot of communities share their goal. They don't have a stated goal, like we do, but the ones that I've looked at are in this range also, maybe a little bit higher, so. Our last pavement survey was done in 2014, and the one completed in 2017 would put our next survey at 2020. We've used Good Point for this in the past, we would expect to continue to do that. The big thing is, is we get a consistent rating, we get the rating done in a limited time period, and then, of course, the cost, the cost has been reasonable, and in particular, when we consider that it would cost and pull away city staff from other higher priority needs if we were to do it internally, so we've continued to use them.
May I ask something with that?
Yes.
Document in the packet, it says they walk?
Yes.
The routes?
They physically walk the routes and measure the cracks and identify the various distresses, yes. So this gives you a kind of a picture of where we've been over time with our overall network PCI. We started out at 72, we've gone as high as 77, we've been as low as 66. I think if you notice where we're at on the low end, it's following the recession period, and following that period, the development, and in that period, the development that was taking place in the community was not like it had been prior to that, so we were able to utilize a lot of the funding for projects that specifically impacted PCIs positively. In other words, we're taking care of the roads that we already had. When you see back in 96 into 2004, the reason for that increase in network PCIs, quite honestly, because a lot of those were new streets in the system. We've come back after this period since 2008 and '09 in particular, and have regained, you know, 10 points of PCI in that period of time, which I think is a good thing. I just want to take a look at some photos. You might even recognize a few of these places, just, I don't want to think about that and just kind of give you a picture of what a road that's at that PCI looks like. At a 90, you might see a few cracks that start, typically cracks start perpendicular to the route of travel, that's an effect of the weather, freeze thaw, stuff moves around. You might start to see maybe a few other distresses at 90 that we would, and partly what we do as maintenance staff, if we see a distress on a road like this, we're going to take extra care to do a very high-quality repair, so that we get the life out of that repair. Street segment that's a 70, you might see some additional cracking and some cracking that goes both directions. The ride is pretty smooth, otherwise, none of the cracks are real big. You might see a few repairs that have been made on there over the course of time. As you can see from the photo, this is no longer a 70, it's 100 now, so it had dropped quite a bit lower than a 70 at one point. Here's a street that's a 50, a little bit more cracking. These are potential candidates for going in and working hard on preparing these surfaces for seal coating, or in some cases overlays. This would be the kind of road that we have in mind for that type of higher-level surface treatment. Once we get into the 30s, things are pretty poor. We'll see our maintenance focus shift from the high-quality repair to just focusing on the safety. Just, do we have any big holes? Do we have any big problems that we can address with maintenance staff? Once we get to this point, down to 10, we're really just focused on the centered 24, driving lanes, and then the crosswalk areas. It just doesn't pay to put a whole lot of effort into a road like this. We know it's going to be coming up for some sort of reconstruction or rehabilitation project soon. So if we want to maintain our PCI in the 65 to 75 range, the system indicates to us that we'll need to invest about $3.4, $3.5 million a year, about $3 million of that in capital and the other $400,000 in maintenance. Underfunding projects that affect the pavement condition eventually will result in the average PCI dropping, and then the maintenance options for those deteriorating pavements become more limited and more expensive as time goes on, and so the benefit is in maintaining the roads and keeping the roads in good condition. One of the things that happens to a lot of communities is you'll see, particularly, it seems like smaller communities, they'll get to a point where the roads have gotten, they have to do something, so they do a large-scale project, and they invest a lot of money into it, and there's debt that goes along with that, and then they get caught in a cycle, because it's hard to both pay the debt and to maintain the road, so now, 25 years later, you're doing the same thing. We're trying to break that cycle by making sure that we're doing the pavement maintenance at appropriate times. So this is just kind of a summary again, as we saw that pavement condition drop in the timeframe of the recession, and there's, the good news that we see here is that our good and our excellent pavements increased almost 7%, and, you know, our poor dropped 4%, and the marginal dropped 2%, so this is an effect of the projects that we've done in the last several years. I think, to me, I'm a boring pavement guy, this is the most impactful graph that we have, because we can see that we're moving towards this ideal curve. We've, you can look back, particularly in '07, '04, we were way out of whack with what the ideal curve is, and we've been working hard to get ourselves back on track, and we're going the right direction, and this is very encouraging to me, because this will steady the amount of investment that's done over the course of time. Obviously, it'll grow with inflation and construction costs and things like that, but the general, there won't be as wild ups and downs to get, to maintain the system in a good condition. This is just another way to look at it, you know, we see this curve in 2017 appear a little bit more, you know, a little bit higher on the red, down for the orange, and up for the green, and that's what we're looking for, so you can see that that hasn't always been the case. Over the last five years, we've done about 730,000 square yards of pavement maintenance, all the way ranging from new construction into, you know, an oil sealant, and these are the distribution of those projects over the past five years. It ends up being kind of an equivalent depreciation of touching every road every 10 years with one of these types of projects, so. And I think the other thing that you can note is that, you know, 74% of these are maintenance-level project, sealant projects, so that's why we focus on those two types of sealants and the seal coating that we talked about just a few minutes ago. That's where we cover a lot of ground with a little money, so. So the different project types, this is what we came up with, the way we do this is we take a look at 20-year period, look out 20-year and optimize the projects, and then we say, okay, optimize the projects at maintaining the existing PCI, increasing the PCI by 10% and decreasing the PCI by 10%. We take a look at all three of those, and we choose the most cost-effective projects for the five-year period. That's what we identify, and that's how we come up with, and it helps us in putting together our capital improvement plan. And this is the distribution. You can see about 1.5 million for reconstructions and partial reconstructions, a little over a million for reclaims and overlays, and then, of course, there's spending that does not affect PCI, things like sidewalks and streetscapes and trees and lights and all those other things that you need on a project. And that comes up with that amount. And you can see that we're pretty close to, you know, we're about at the right level for the project funding sources that we have identified. You know, I think considering that if we continue to expend funds for majority of projects that affect positively the PCI, you know, I think we're in good shape for the capital projects. Maintenance projects also, we're in good shape. Big part of that is the infrastructure maintenance funds, the hundred-and-twenty-five per year for seal coating. And then the other, the two-hundred-and-fifty that covers general maintenance. And then, of course, general funds. So also in very good shape. Kind of a summary is why do we do this? We want to protect that investment in pavements. We want to keep our PCIs in that sixty-five to seventy-five range. We've recently adjusted the GO bond limit to the one-point-nine. That was critical. And we want to continue looking at our network on a three-year basis, looking at construction costs and funding options at least. Certainly continually, but at least in some detail on a five-year basis to make sure that we're continuing to do what we need to do. So I guess if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer those. And there's a lot of detail there. I know if certainly I'd be, even if you have questions later on, don't hesitate to ask.
So John out in Industrial Park, I see that the water and sewer are stubbed out, right? So you don't have to dig into the road?
Correct. That's correct.
Is that kind of a standard practice now?
Yes, wherever we can, we like to do that because then you're limiting the number of cuts into that roadway.
You mean you can eliminate bumps?
Well, it helps. It helps to some extent, yes. Yeah, and any kind of utility cut, you know, and that's another thing. We're going to take a little bit different look at a utility cut on a road that's a ninety versus one that's a fifty. We're going to be a little bit more persnickety about getting things correct on a road that's in better shape because we know that that's going to affect life for a long period of time.
Well, it's just in the springtime on Michigan.
Michigan, that's, I know why that happened. I know why that happened. Yeah, that's going to take some work to fix that one. So hopefully, we're getting the signs out in time. And, you know, it doesn't last long.
No, it don't last long, but it does get pretty deep.
It can get crazy.
Anything else for John?
Maybe Kent, kind of related for people that are, might be watching. But, you know, we've got the PCI, which is trying to maintain the streets. And then we've got the construction program. That's where we go in to do the rehabs or reconstructions and part of our five-year plan. But, you know, some of that we know is, might be dependent on other factors, you know, like the stormwater pond, we want to get some of that done before we fix some of those roads or some of the side roads off of Main Street that might get affected by the Main Street reconstruction project, right?
Yeah, there's a lot of moving parts. It's like John had on his slides. Yeah, we have reconstruction and kind of rehab projects, two different approaches. You know, they're placeholders for the bonding, the assessment dollars and the state aid dollars on the project front. But yeah, there's a lot of moving parts, you know, especially right now with twenty-twenty coming on Main Street and, you know, the pond project and really delaying that whole rec center area either side of the facility until we made the ultimate decision on that drainage improvement there. And then I think another thing is just delivering projects and scoping projects. You know, we have the one-point-nine-million-dollar bonding target, but that means we have to generate, you know, four-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand in special improvement assessments. And we want to be consistent with how we're assessing people and fair and consistent. And, you know, other projects generate more assessment than others. So we have to keep that in mind as we scope and deliver projects too so we can arrive at an assessment level that allows us to bond for the one-point-nine. So, yeah, there's a lot of moving parts and, you know, resource allocation committee. We have a lot of these discussions as we develop our infrastructure program. And I'll admit, you know, we rely on the pavement management program information. And John and I have quite a bit of discussion every year when we put our CIP together. And, you know, we're not programming some of our rehab projects, you know, five years out or maybe even three years out. And we want to be responsive to how things change and not be communicating to people, we're going to rehab your street in five years. Because then, you know, I think we, some people, we set off alarm bells and they see an assessment coming and, you know, then they think about that for five years and then maybe the project doesn't arrive. So we don't want to tie our hands. So we leave things pretty fluid within the CIP and have kind of a pavement management program placeholder. And then we identify the larger projects and particularly the ones that are going to involve our state aid dollars. And those we do have to plan for and program a little bit better when we're delivering those in-house with our engineering staff. So I think, can this, that answer your question?
Yeah, go ahead.
And then the other thing to note is just what might or might not happen on the construction front or the construction cost front. And like John alluded to, there was the recession and a couple of things happened. You know, some of those newer streets in the early two thousand were getting older pretty quick on us, that blip of those. And then really, we were spending, you know, we were still delivering projects, which was favorable that the construction costs were relatively low. Albeit, we were having to utilize some of our bonding dollars to pay for the sewer and water portions of those projects at that point in time. So not all those bonding dollars or assessment dollars per se were going into the pavements themselves because, you know, we were, after the plant expansions, we were in a somewhat of a rough spot there with the debt issue, you know, at that point in time. So that was part of that blip down in the reasoning for the blip in the PCI. And I think the scariest thing right now is we've been in a favorable bidding climates in this region, particularly in the last few years. And I think things are changing on the labor front and it's impacting the construction industry. And I think the scarier thing is what happens on the oil frontier. And obviously, things are creeping up. So we'll learn more when we finally bid Century Avenue, hopefully in the next few weeks.
You guys identified capital shortfalls and maintenance shortfalls. So it looks like you're looking for maybe another two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand bucks a year.
I think we're okay there. You know, we're not.
Come on, John, you guys would always take more money.
We'll take more money, yeah.
I think that goes back to construction costs.
Exactly.
We're hearing good things about bids in the region.
Right.
But I'm hearing a whole different story on the west side of the metro and it's bad news for them. And oil keeps going up. So we need to learn more what construction costs are.
Yeah, I think it's a little early to say, you know, yeah, we need another X dollars in, you know, funding. We're close enough that I think, you know, we got to recognize it that we're close to the bubble. So that's why I think it's very critical that as we work through these projects, we see what costs are doing. We maybe revamp what our per-square-yard costs are for certain types of projects based on our new bidding. And I do try to do that on an annual basis to look through and maybe look back at the last three or four years of costs to say, are we using the appropriate costs in our assumptions? And I think we're pretty close on right now. You know, it'll, time will tell if we're going to have to raise those numbers or not.
And John, I will say, if you recall, when we increased that bonding number, that was part of that number that we looked at. And so you could see, I don't know for sure if that was two to three-hundred thousand at that time, but you could see how much we really closed that gap by making that adjustment to our construction dollars.
Yeah, that was well-received. Like Matt said, yeah, that took it from the one-point-five million, which it had been since I started in oh-four. So we had been at that one-point-five-million-dollar target for many, many years. So, yeah, I think the four-hundred thousand is much appreciated. It's helped fill that gap and it's, yeah, it's part of the reasoning for this upswing. Because that allows us to leverage for more assessments too, you know, it's at eighty-twenty splits, so.
Packs the people more.
Well, yeah, deliver projects, deliver more projects.
Keeps the PCI up.
Yeah, very good.
Anything else for John?
All right, thank you very much.
Discussion on policy for the use of Masonic West River Park stage.
I'm Aaron Collins. So we, obviously, we've got our next agenda item is an ordinance that we discussed at our previous council meeting. And at the previous council meeting, there was a discussion on, as we've had, I would say probably more requests come into us over the last couple, probably the last two years for use of that stage. Council had given some feedback to staff about really needing to look at adopting a policy that addresses, okay, when do we rent out that stage and how do we do it? And so as staff start looking into it, and hopefully you can see that within the memo, that quite frankly, there's many tentacles that go to this. And so we're really trying to get, I guess, a clear direction from the council on, as we look at developing a policy, what exactly do you want to see from us? Because as I noted, you know, right now, our policy allows that stage, we rent it out between nine, from nine AM to nine PM. We've got many other facilities that we rent out within the city right now. If you, you don't have to, you can use our parks without renting anything out. And, you know, you can do many of the same things that you would do on the stage. And so it's really just trying to get a clear direction from you on what you're thinking. And maybe, maybe it's as simple as we just stick with what we got. And we recognize that what's there, it's a campground. And that that's what we're using out for. Or if you want to use a stage and if you want to use it past what's the allowed time, maybe you got to rent out the whole campground to do that. And so I guess that's, I guess why we brought it back was as we looked at it and the many different avenues we can go with it, trying to get a clear understanding of what you guys want.
I know I brought it up, you know, before and then after our last meeting. You know, the comment that Chad made really struck a chord was reminding us that it was a campground. So I looked on the website and saw that the quiet time is ten o'clock. And I think we should respect that because that's what we're expecting of campers who are there. And these are people who are paying customers. So I would, I would just like us to not grant waivers unless, as you mentioned, like with the community festivals like River Song or Relay for Life, they basically rent out the whole campground. But otherwise, I think we should just, again, respect and maintain the current policy. And I'd be happy with that.
Last minute, the Parks Board, the Parks Board passed a recommendation that they would like to see what we have on the books being enforced. You know, having the facility rented till nine and then quiet time at ten, or ten PM. So I'm passing that along because I was at that meeting.
You know, I think it would be beneficial for staff to, you know, so when we get those calls into us that we say, hey, if you want to rent the stage past nine o'clock, these are the requirements to do that. And that's, you know, renting all the, if that's the desire that I'm hearing. Because like you said, we do it right now twice a year. One's Relay for Life, another one is for the River Song. And so if that's our condition in the future, that, hey, if you want to use it and use it past the allowed time, this is going to be requirement. Or it's simply, we're not doing that except for those two moments.
That was brought up at the Parks Board too because what is there, is the campground open sixteen weekends, maybe?
It's May first to what, October, usually the middle of October.
So let's call it sixteen. And there's already two weekends, which they're great events and I think they're great for the community. But so say we grant two more, then twenty-five percent of the weekends are burned by community events when it's really a family campground and.
That's a good point too because I think staff probably hears about that too and they're not available.
Yeah, we hear it even, even though River Song's been there for, I don't know how many years now, we still hear it from. And that's, we publicize that well in advance of people.
Those are both on the website.
I guess the point I'd make maybe about, you know, sixteen, you know, weeks a year is that, you know, this is May first, October first. Well, the solstice sun sets at, what, nine-thirty? So, you know, you're saying quiet time, a half an hour after the sun sets. I mean, what about just making quiet time at eleven o'clock? Because that's when the days are longer. Typically, these events are happening on weekends. You know, so, you know, noise ordinance, noise until eleven, you know, stretch it past ten. I guess the other comment in your memo, you know, talking about the ballpark. And when there's ballgames, the noise goes beyond ten o'clock quite often. So maybe those, I mean, I know Gary wants to get his beauty sleep.
It don't help.
But, you know, those are two different parks that are used for very different things than the rest of the parks in town.
Well, from personal experiences, when I ever went camping, I don't think that we ever went to bed before midnight usually. Because if you have a campfire, you know, you're sitting around a campfire and like John says, it's light till nine-thirty, quarter to ten.
Quiet time doesn't mean not doing it.
Right. It just means not the music.
No, but I mean that people are still up at that time.
Right. But it is a family campground and people do have their children there. Our children don't typically stay up till eleven or midnight.
Most campgrounds, ten PM is about as late as it goes for loud time. Camping with a toddler, if it was eleven or midnight for quiet time, gets to be a real disaster. So I'll throw that two cents out there.
I guess I can remember our kids staying up numerous times. And maybe they were noisy events. But yeah, I mean, that's, but I'm just putting out there, you know, if the expectation is eleven or ten for those two specific parts, parks, but I realize, I mean, with the toddlers and stuff, usually our kids would just crash out in the middle of it. These are my fur trade reenactment event.
You know, and I will say, this is a great time for just to be having this conversation because as I know, it's really, it's starting to tick up now. And so we really need to make a statement, in my opinion, of how are we going to, what was the intention of the stage? What was the intention of the campground? Because I think we're starting to conflict with each other. We really need to.
Well, it's kind of a unique situation. If you look around, you know, there's not a lot of campgrounds that have a stage in it.
Right. Like it works great for River Song, it works great for Relay for Life. But in hindsight, I don't know if that's the best location in the middle of a campground. And I was one-fifth of the board that voted that in, that I didn't think about that when we decided to put it there. And it's certainly not ideal for everything other than the other two, those two big weekends.
But if they stay within these parameters.
A lot of people want to have a party though, you know, it's not, or a big concert. Concerts typically are later and I get that, I've been to many concerts, but.
People could still use the shelter campground. Again, we still have those limits, which are right, but.
Well, and then, I mean, define quiet time too. What does that mean? I mean, no radios playing?
PJ means no amplified sound.
No amplified. No amplified.
And I would, I would say I probably, you know, the general common courtesy for campers is disturbance of others, you know, so it's...
It's a gray area.
Yeah, I know, at Yellowstone Park, it was a very gray area.
Usually we talk about amplified sound, I would say.
No, so the...
Safe to say that the general...
Consensus is to, to leave it and do we, do we establish something that, okay, if you do want to rent it, this is what you need to do? Or do we not even, or do we simply say, we've got two events that are going to go past nine and that's the Relay for Life and, uh...
River Song.
River Song.
It's more of a community thing, might be open to something versus a private party. I mean, if there's more of a public purpose to it. And I don't know what that would be right now, but that's what's behind River Song and Relay for, um, you know, if some other event got started, you know, that's worth a discussion.
Now, let's go back to the ball field though. So when things go along there, how, how do we deal with that?
But they're not camping there.
That's a separate discussion, in my opinion.
Yeah.
And they're not camping there.
Yeah, it's just residential.
Right.
With the sun, the light shining in to the houses there.
That's not different from when River Song is on and if I'm not there, everybody in our neighborhood's listening to it because we're just across the river and...
But shouldn't we make, then should we have a specific policy about?
I think so.
We, we need to, yeah, so...
I mean, maybe that's just simply that it's 11 o'clock instead of 10. I mean, because usually typically a baseball game's gonna start at 7:00. Most of the time they're done by...
11?
Or 10. Well, it should be done by 10, but you are...
Melissa, what, no?
You never know.
Yeah, Roberts Park, they have a light.
Suppose, yeah, about Roberts Park?
Mm-hmm.
I was thinking about VFW.
The VFW park.
Oh, great. Now you throw a whole nother wrench in there.
Roberts Park.
Music.
Now it's...
Yeah.
We do have a third event down there, Water Carnival rents out that stage or that's, that side of the, um, park now for events.
Oh.
That's Saturday.
On Thursday.
And Thursday.
Thursday.
Yeah. Like the tractor poles and stuff?
No, no.
Yeah, sooner or later.
Yeah.
And they're noisy.
Right.
I mean, it, you know, I mean, it's once in a...
We should probably stop talking.
Right. And they're amplified.
The Water Carnival concerts, I think, end at 10:00, stage at the camp. So, because I happen to look at that.
Did they end at 10:00 last year? I don't know if they did.
Well, if I'm a camper, it's a process series.
Yeah.
Um, they played through the fireworks and so they ended when the fireworks ended. So they played in the cabanas here.
And the fireworks are tip?
10:30.
At 10:00.
Later than something.
Yeah, 10:00.
Although I believe the Water Carnival rented all the campsites on that side as a goodwill piece last year because we ran into a camper that his expectation was not that there would be Water Carnival people everywhere last year. So I think as, like, not per policy, but per goodwill.
Just as courtesy.
They rented all the sites this year.
If you were gonna rent all those campsites, what would that come up to monetarily?
A lot of money.
A lot of money?
The Water Carnival just did the, the tent sites that are right by the stage. They didn't do all the, not like River Song where they rent the whole shebang, but...
Not alone to be a deterrent.
You know, that's to Matt's point, you know, if you were gonna allow the stage to be used till 11 o'clock, you require the people to rent the sites that the stage faces, which are maybe what, 10?
Right, but then we're, we're talking, that's three weekends where that happens.
Yeah, which is a good point, yeah.
It is 11 o'clock for the stage with, on the Thursday night.
And the part that gets back to Steve's, you know, it's, it's another community event. So really you get three community events that are, are, which maybe answers the question of, are you gonna allow private events? And maybe the answer is...
Well, how many times has this come up in the last?
Well, in the last year, I think this is our third request for private party at the stage. That's, that's getting back to my original point is that we're starting to see it.
Getting more and more events.
More and more now.
Right, that's because it's a nice area, it's a nice stage, you know, people want to utilize it.
I brought up at Park Board last night, but it's a super cheap place to have a pretty nice wedding. You know, it's 40 bucks to rent that thing all day. And so then, when people kind of figure that out, it could get really popular real quick. You know, because it's a nice, nice place for 40 bucks.
Esther Schroeder figured that out.
Yeah.
Go for campfire is not a bad deal. Enjoying it and then you can use the facility for your wedding for free.
Well, if we, how about if we just leave it to 10 o'clock, then that's as long as they can rent it. Because then it would be quiet time, right?
The only issue with 10, I mean, I, I think staff will work with, the only issue with 10 is usually it takes a good hour to...
Actually get out of there.
People start winding it down at 10, they're not out.
Right.
And then, but then the other policy is that the River Song stage is only rented until 9:00.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say.
But that's, I think that, that gets back to that question. Okay, we've got 9:00 for the stage and we've got 10:00 for amplified sound. We have 10:00 for liquor and we have 10:00 for, um, quiet time. Now, if we're gonna say quiet time's gonna stay at 10, I, I would think staff would say, well, prefer than, you wanna leave that stage open till 9:00 because then that gives a good hour to really...
Wind down.
Wind down. Because we, we always know that the concert doesn't always end right away at 9:00.
Yeah.
One more song, one more song.
Here's another community event that may not happen in the near future, but I can remember at least two times inflating the, uh, movie screen on the stage and showing the movie in the park. And we didn't, we couldn't, can't start showing that. Well, even in downtown, we can't show that until it's dark out. This doesn't work, so...
But, yeah, it's quarter to 10 and then you, you know, like last year, American Graffiti was a couple hours long. I mean, it's...
Does that screen work well downtown?
It works good.
It works, it works well downtown, but you've gotta wait until it gets dark, it's dark for it to work. And then I'm always worried about hitting the power lines when I'm driving the big stakes into the ground, but they did mark all the power lines, going to all the lighting. So I was noting that.
But as far as the sound, the traffic?
But it's sound amplification in the park. I mean, that's, you've got the speaker and you've got it cranked up loud enough to...
So it does work, all right?
Traffic.
Yeah.
Most of those movies, everybody knows it line by line.
American Graffiti, you do.
Speaking of downtown, you know, I think, I thought about this too, and thinking about this subject, but, you know, that's a good example of something that might go later. We've also, uh, approved events at, well, there's two street dances now with Water Carnival that go till 12:30. Um, this year is the first year that we've, well, or were requested to have the two nights, Friday and Saturday. And, but in the past, we've had some other events, like I know, and we had Coney Island, any event there, went late and had a few calls from neighbors on that. And, uh, I know the Legion had had some before, maybe that works with Water Carnival, uh, the, uh, Oktoberfest a few times. So, I think we have to be cognizant of the neighbors on some of those events too.
You know, and it's just, obviously it's a reminder too, that right now, all those events had to get special and we're not, and, and if we leave it how it is, that, that's still gonna have to take place. I think it's just, it's good for staff, no, it's more likely we're gonna keep getting these requests, that we simply say, for the stage at the campground, no, it's not gonna take. So, well, let me do this, so we could probably...
That would be my suggestion that, and that's...
Let me do this because we could probably sit here and talk for another half hour. But let's staff maybe put a couple things together for you guys to consider. Probably add a broader approach.
I mean, I, I agree totally with Chad's point though about, you know, 25%, you know, that keeps growing 50%, 75% of the time, somebody's running the stage. I think that really messes up the campground, yeah, so...
Which is really turning to, uh, attraction.
Maybe that cost should go up.
It's really, the campground's really turning to, you know, attraction for people.
They had their best year last year ever, so...
But maybe the cost should go up, like Chad said, what, $40 to rent the stage?
It's a different subject.
That's something else, you know, that maybe we should be discussing.
All right, uh, so we'll let staff work on this. Yep. But it does play into another item here.
All right.
Yes.
Um, in front of you is, obviously as a feedback to this discussion, we had a request to, for a private party on May 18th, the event's being held from 7:00 to 11:00 PM. Obviously, uh, suspension of enforcement of our, both of our, both of our noise ordinance and of our liquor ordinance. Uh, first reading of this ordinance was approved at last meeting. Um, second reading and adoption is in front of you for consideration. First reading of the ordinance.
It's gonna feel just as, and this is what prompted the whole other discussion, but, um, I'd make a motion to deny just based on the quiet time and respect for, uh, the campers and the expectations that we have for the other people.
I would second that motion to deny.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Chad to deny any other discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Carried.
Uh, financial management plan.
Um, Mayor and Council, this item presented to you at your last meeting. Um, it was tabled at that meeting. There was, uh, some questions that came in that staff had, had answered and, uh, there were some general statements of, from the Council of Long Island to have some time to, to be able to review that, um, in a little bit more detail. Um, we provided to you tonight for consideration, the, well, I guess I would consider to be potentially a final draft. Um, we've noted some of the changes from the original draft are, are noted and read and some of these were answers to some of the questions that, uh, that were posed. Um, you know, the one conversation we did have at our last meeting had to do with, uh, um, fund balance policy. Um, I know I received a late email today from Council member Cook. Other than that, I had not received any other comments, um, on the, the financial management plan since we tabled it. So I guess it's back in front of you tonight for consideration, discussion, conversation, however you'd like to proceed with it.
I have, go ahead.
Well, just, uh, I mean, the, went through the last of it, just the exhibit, the list of city funds and we've got HRA loan fund listed as a city fund. Is that really a city fund? Because isn't HRA standalone?
Those are actually grant dollars received by the city utilized by the HRA for loan programs.
Guess my only thing, I still go back to that fund balance, um, on page 16 of the... Yeah, I mean, it's, currently the way it's written is, you know, our policy is to have not less than 40% of the next year's general fund budgeted expenditures. And then it says fund balances in excess of 40, but less than 50, uh, shall be designated as unassigned. And then anything over 50 can be, shall be reviewed by the council to determine if, uh, such excess should be transferred to other funds. Um, and I guess, um, I was suggesting changing that to anything over 60%. I know Matt said we probably won't see any over 60% for, in the near future, but to me, it, that isn't, I guess I don't see the, where it's relevant for that. Um, I started looking at some other cities, some of our comparable cities, and this is where I'm a little, uh, confused with some of the verbiage. But we say unrestricted, right?
Right, correct.
And so unrestricted would be anything less than restricted? So that could be committed. Am I right? And assigned and unassigned?
Right, um, yeah, it can, it contains those three categories, unrestricted, committed, assigned, and then you have unassigned is separate from unrestricted.
So, for example, Marshall, their, um, policy is 50% minimum unrestricted fund balance of 50%. Uh, Fergus Falls is kinda like ours, you know, based on the auditors. Um, New Ulm, they have a minimum unassigned fund balance of 50%. And, uh, Bemidji is unassigned policy, you know, 50% also. And, and then they have balances of more than that. And so, and then the other thing I looked at was on the League's website and they said that really, there's two criteria. One is from the state auditor. And this is printed out really small, so you gotta give me a second here. But it says, the first is that the unrestricted fund balance in the general fund and any special revenue funds shall be equal to 30 to...
30 to 50, huh?
30, 50% of the general...
35 to 50%.
35 to 50% of the general fund operating revenues. And then, uh, the second criteria is that any unrestricted fund balance should be no less than five months of operating expenditures, which five months is about 42%, you know.
Well, they don't say five months, um, of your full calendar. I mean, I could interpret that either five 12s or, which would be 41.6%, or your first five months of expenditures, which are typically lighter for us than when we get into the summer and fall with parks and street projects and whatnot. I think tech, we've historically focused on that 35 to 50% of operating expenses, which I know that doesn't, isn't how it reads. Um, but since we bound, have a balanced budget every year, our revenues are our expenditures, so...
Yeah, I've kinda wondered about how that works.
It's wording and we can certainly correct that in here.
Yeah. But I guess at the same time, I think it's worked pretty well. I know we're close to 60%, weren't we?
We were over 60% at one point.
We did the pool here and...
And those were from years where we were cutting expenditures and we're seeing pretty good surpluses. But naturally, as your expenditures come down and you don't spend your reserves, your fund balance percentage goes up. Uh, the last three years, we've increased our expenditures. Our surplus isn't, haven't been as large, so percentages come down. And obviously we spent our reserves on the water park as well. Um, but in order to get back up to 60%, we're gonna have to have some pretty sizable surpluses to get there now.
And again, I don't see the relevance anyway. I mean, basically, we're just saying that before we start talking about shifting some of that money, or saying that we shall have that discussion, doesn't mean that we still can't have that discussion, because anything over 40 percent is still unassigned. So I just, I don't see anything wrong with having an expectation that we'll try to have that higher, a little higher cushion, especially, you know, there's always gonna be uncertainty with the economy and who knows, LGA or, you know.
I guess, if that's the desire of the council, I would say that's fine. I mean, what we had before was strictly, it said 40 percent. That was the only thing that was in policy. And so, one of the things that Andy and I are trying to do is get some feedback from the council on, okay, what happens when it's over 40? Because that's never been shared or discussed. So, how do we make a decision when we dive into our reserves? And if the council simply says, you know, we don't have to have the 50 percent language in there. That was something that Andy and I recommended to be added to help with. Okay, when do we, when does Andy and I, as staff, consider using fund balance? For, when do we bring that recommendation to the council for?
The $250,000 a year we need to do the roads.
That, or the, or the million dollars that we contribute to help pay for the Aquatic Center. Was trying to get that mechanism in. And if it's 60 percent, 70 percent, whatever the council wants, we're fine with that. You're right, there's, there's no magic number. Only magic number Andy and I try to follow is at 35 to 50 percent, and the 40 percent has been established by a previous council for, prior to Andy and I being here, and so.
No, I, you know, it's just a number, and it always can.
Right, I feel we can talk about it at any time.
Right.
I don't know that we need Andy or Matt to bring it up to us. We can see it every year in the annual report. It's not a secret.
Right.
What our fund balance is. And if we need to know what it is, I feel, the answer's an email away from Andy.
Right.
So I would be fine taking the number out altogether.
I'm fine with that, too.
I mean, because really, at the end of the day, Andy and I wanna make sure we don't drop below whatever that.
That's the biggest concern.
That's the biggest concern for us, really.
But we don't also wanna be sitting on too much money there.
Right.
I have complete confidence in you, Andy, that you'd never let us go.
And, well, and I'll say this, too. Part of the reason that we do policy is not just for this council.
Right.
It's really for, now, obviously, obviously, nothing binds future councils, and they can change it at any time. And so, like I said, we're fine. I think the biggest thing came up when we started having conversations about the Aquatic Center was, okay, in the future, when should we really be looking at this? And you're right, both Chad and, well, actually, all of you. If you guys are doing your due diligence, and you're looking at that fund balance on a yearly basis, you guys should be able to make a decision on, okay, we're at 55 percent, we can tap into that, or instead of raising levies, we can tap into that, or, or that project that's sitting out there, I feel comfortable. Really, the 40 percent is what we're, what we're really concerned with. We were just trying to add some additional guidance for future staff and councils, so.
So, I would ask, you know, 40 percent has worked pretty well, but we've always, I think, been over 50 typically.
Since I've been here, over 50, right.
So, is really 40, is that a good number? I mean, it is a minimum.
40 gets us through the first tax payment from the county in.
Okay, all right, so that's.
Well, Steve, you're talking about striking B and C under Permanental Funds General Fund?
That's what.
Yeah, and I would say that's what the policy stated before. Correct, Andy? I think that's what, I think we didn't have a B and C in there.
Right, we did not have a B and C.
B and C is what, was what we had added for our language.
That's what Chad had suggested, you know, and I guess I'm okay with that, too, because both the B and C just still give us flexibility, what we wanna do. It doesn't mandate anything other than C was, okay, let's have a discussion. Well, we could have a discussion at a lower amount, too.
True.
So.
Okay. Any other questions, comments on the policy?
Is everybody okay there?
Yeah, you know, one of the, and I would say if you do end up wanting to recommend approval, is that you just make that recommendation with the striking of those two, those two items. You know, one of the things, and we, we talked about, okay, when do we review this? Actually, news came out last week, I believe, that the competitive bidding thresholds have been increased to 175,000. That goes into, they have been, signed into law by the governor.
They're signed.
Yep, but that goes into effect August 1st. So, you can't do, I mean, anything that's done before August 1st still needs a, so we'll have to be updating this policy in the near future, but.
Hard to keep track of what passes at the cap. I mean, that's still gotta be signed by the governor.
Yeah, I saw it today, I'm like, well, I know they were talking about it, but no, apparently it has been signed by the governor. So, and it goes into effect August, August 1st, so.
One thing I had a question on was on page 20, where it says the limit of $2.6 million. I know that's what the graph shows, but that's kinda out years, a little bit farther, right?
Right, that's out in 2031, I believe.
Right. And that was my question only, because, you know, the way it's worded, it almost looks like the limit is.
That is immediately.
Yeah, right now.
Right. You know, when I started here, the target was always 2.2, and we slowly worked our way there, and it was kinda similar. We always talked about 2.2, so that's how I, I wrote this as well. But we can, we can clarify that a little better, if you'd like.
I mentioned, one of my questions was about having like an annual compliance report. Maybe that's part of the review, but, you know, when we were looking at policy governance, one of the pieces of that was to have some kind of a monitoring report that would show the council how we're actually doing compared to what we said we should be doing. So now we're gonna have this policy, and from the budget, we'll know what that is, and the fund balance, we'll know what that is. But some of the other stuff, we don't really know.
Some of it you may not see, but it helps me and Matt do our daily jobs. The departments do their jobs.
Sure, yeah. But, and, but then you tie it back to the end statements, you know, where we have our goals and things like that. And I had shared with Matt a document from the city of Bloomington, and that's what they.
Burnsville.
Or Burnsville, yep. And, because they've kinda got a rendition of policy governance, too. And that's what they tried to do with that, is here's our goals and our end statements, and here's the policies, how they fit, and if it's good transportation, it talks about the PCI, or, you know, some of the capital improvement projects that are done. Finance, it'll talk about some of those things. And it's all kinda brought together and undocumented, so might be something to look at going forward, too.
Yeah, you know, and the compliance report's fine, is, you know, are you talking about, okay, the amount of times the policy was violated? I mean, is that part of what we're?
Guess that's something to be talked about a little bit more.
Mm-hmm.
I think some of that is more from your end. Obviously, it's not council, but, again, just monitoring the higher level pieces of this, and all of everything that we're doing.
Anything else?
I'd make a motion to approve the management plan with the two, two items struck from the plan.
I'll second.
Motion by Chad, second by Mary to approve the financial plan with the corrections.
Changes.
Changes, corrections, changes, whatever. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Okay, setting council budget workshop for May 22nd, 2018 at 4:00 p.m.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, let's over here, budget kickoff. We've done the last. Kinda get that council feedback and direction system.
19 budget.
I'll make a motion to set that workshop.
Second. Motion by Chad, second by John to set that council workshop for May 22nd. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried. Setting council workshop for June 12th, 2018 at 4:00 p.m. to review State Truck Highway 15 downtown reconstruction project items.
I'll make a motion.
Yeah, just a quick introduction. Lots gonna be happening over the next month on the project development front, specifically the streetscaping landscaping aspects being done by Mindout's consultant. And then on the city front, we're making some headway on the trunk sanitary sewer and trunk water main design. So, those are the two specific items I'd like to review with council in early June and prior to a lot of that information heading towards the general public in late June, July timeframe. That's it.
I'll make a motion to set that workshop.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mary, second by Chad to set the workshop for June 12th, 2018. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. We have, we have the 2017, 2018 snow season report and library board minutes.
There was a lot of snow.
Lot of snow.
Not good.
No, it wasn't.
John, you have anything else for us?
Just wanted to give a quick update on spring sweeping. We should be finishing up at least one run-through of the entire community later this week. We've been in the alleys to do what we can. We're kinda waiting for a little bit of more rain. We're kinda hoping for a little rain today. We didn't quite get enough, but we'll, we'll continue to work on those. And then, of course, patching is ongoing, so that's, that's what we're up to.
Not too bad of a year for Poples, huh?
It hasn't been that bad. There have been a lot worse years. I was a little bit afraid when we had the 30 inches of snow the first two weeks of April, so that was kinda scary. But, no, it's, it's come, come through well, so.
I can check out Les Coober.
Yeah, Les Coober, at this point, that's another reason we're hoping for a little rain. We do have it, we do have a road closed on either end. Some of the, some of the frost boiling and things that's happening along the, for the south portion of the road is pretty, pretty rough. We'll be looking at that. Typically, we, we borrow the county's equipment for a grader on Fridays, because they work four 10-hour days. So, that arrangement works well, so we'll be looking to see if we can get in there on Friday and get that graded, or start that process, so.
How do you fix that, John? I was down there yesterday by the landing. It's brutal. But like, do you just keep grading it till it's smooth?
Yeah, that, actually, what'll, what would do the greatest good for us is if we had a nice rain. That would take care of it.
Hard rain.
Yep. A good half inch rain would be perfect. So, we'll have to maybe dance around some of those areas as we open it up, but we'll, we'll keep an eye on it, so.
Is the frost completely out? Not yet, huh?
Uh, there, I would say, there might be areas where it isn't out yet, but what we're seeing is just, you know, you got, that thing's built about an inch and a quarter over sea level, so that's part of the problem. You know, it's, it's, it's really wet underneath there, and it takes a while for that to settle down in the spring. You know, we've had, we've had worse springs, for sure, down there, but this one's pretty tough. So, and I think a lot of it comes from that moisture we had late in the season, so.
You could lose a toddler in some of those holes on that road.
Indeed. So, please respect that. We, you know, you can get to the campgrounds, you can do some of those things, but beware on that area, so. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Kent?
Couple things. Alluded to Century Avenue, our reconstruction project. We're still working through the federal aid process, unfortunately. So, we're here in a few weeks, I guess, quote unquote, a couple of weeks ago now. So, hopefully, we're getting there, and we'll get authorized to go out for bids here shortly. Our construction's start date is slipping at this point. By the time we get through the bidding process, the feds mend out approving the bids, and then ultimately, the council, we're probably looking at late June, early July. Yeah, maybe, hopefully, we'll be awarding your last council meeting in, in June, things go real well. We've been, obviously, touching base with the college and the hospital and clinic along the way here to keep them informed.
Has it come to be a point where maybe it's better to do it next year, or?
I hope not, but we're, we're getting there, honestly. And it might have to be, I think we played with the, the dates and laid out kinda the, the last resort scenario. And it's probably, you know, last resort's awarding in your first meeting in Ju, July to potentially deliver the entire project. And maybe we'd leave the wear course off till, till next year, you know, might be one approach. But, yeah, if we slip beyond that, we're gonna have to get into a phasing to deliver a portion of it this year and a portion of it next year. So I don't think we'd even open it all up then. But it'd be nice to get conceivably the first half done, and, or else we, we approach it from the east. Might be the, the issue at hand, you know, whereas we're gonna have to, once the college is back in session, that's kinda the magic date at hand that we're, we're up against.
Don't, aren't bids usually higher, too, as you get into the season, because?
Yeah, they, they can be, but the, they're gonna wanna see it bid this year. That's another stipulation of the federal monies. So, we're up against that, where they have to allocate those dollars based on the actual construction bid. Now, that all the work needs to get done this year, but it does have to be bid. Quickly, on the Front Highway 15, Main Street front, the ADA informational meeting being put on by the Chamber is Tuesday, May 22nd, at the Event Center, 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. So, obviously, all the downtown businesses, I believe, have been contacted by the Chamber. They did get out some informational packets to those business owners over the last few weeks, so if you're interested in that, please attend. Leading for pavement management program, which we ordered the hearing on earlier this evening, we'll be having the, the project neighborhood informational meeting on Tuesday, May 15th, week from today, 7:00 to 8:00 o'clock that evening. And lastly, Second Avenue is opened up as of late yesterday. Our water main crossing went well. Took a little time to get everything tied back in, just the nature of the work, so no surprises or anything, just some wet conditions that to deal with, and that was to be expected. But roads put back together, there's a roadwork ahead sign, there's a bump sign. A bump might be an understatement, so we ask people to pay attention down there.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, so. It'll be in that temporary condition until the, the actual bridge project starts, and talking to that contractor, they might start the day after school getting out, which is actually Friday the 1st. We specified Monday the 4th, but they might actually take advantage of that, that extra day or two on the front end. We specified Monday the fourth, but they might actually take advantage of that, that extra day or two on the front end.
It was impressive to see them bore that pipe in.
Yeah, it's a big pipe.
Yeah.
Big, long fused pipe, yeah, no doubt, so, uh, very unique operation. It, it's not, it, the typical H. D. P. E. black pipe. It was actually fused PVC pipe, the blue pipe that we use for, you know, our bell jointed, uh, installations, so, uh, yeah, it, it's really, it's, it's a better pipe. Uh, it's just, it's not as popular in this, this area. They're, the, the people, the contractors that fuse that type of pipe don't exist as much as the typical H. D. P. E. black pipe, so, good stuff. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Sabora?
I don't have anything else tonight.
Chad?
I don't have anything else to add either.
Mary?
The only thing I have is I had, um, some persons talk to me about the great program with the fire department and, uh, Red Cross had kind of partnered together to install smoke detectors. And, um, they said it was great. They came in, they, they needed them, they put them up, they talked to them, they explained the safety reasons, and what a great program, you know, so thank you to them. That's it.
John?
Oh, a couple of things. I, I mentioned just the, the thing down at the legislature, you know, kind of taking away local control on some of the building code issues. So maybe something to pay attention a little bit about. Um, history stuff, Dean Erdahl's gonna be out at the McLeod County Historical Society on June third, uh, with his new book. Uh, the other thing that I thought was of significant note, um, that happened yesterday was that, that Catlin pipe that, uh, was White Dog had given to one of the soldiers in Mankato before he was hung with the other thirty-eight down in Mankato, was purchased by an individual and given to the Prairie Island Tribal Council on Monday. I thought that was pretty neat. I mean, we're tied to the Dakota conflict and it was a very sacred pipe, um, so interesting story to follow. Memorial Day is coming up, um, I'd like everybody to look at the American flags that are flying around town. There's a lot of them that are really ratty and they should be replaced. That's it.
Thanks, Sean. Steve?
Couple of things. One related to the campground, uh, is down, we rode bike, you know, through there Saturday night and people were having their campfires and I'm pretty sure there's probably five that were not using certified firewood. They brought their own. They might have been logs, they might have been large split pieces, um, and I guess it just goes back to the whole E. A. B. I think, Matt, you said staff is working on a sign right now. We don't have a sign up there about.
We posted stuff, obviously, on the website where people need to go to, to register, but, yeah, I know we were working on getting a sign out there.
Yes, to me, you know, a pun maybe, but, you know, I think we're playing with fire a little bit with, you know, just trying not to enforce that more and I still wonder about if the best way is to have a camp host there, which, uh, a lot of campgrounds have. And, uh, then they can monitor things, they can be there to answer questions, um, if things get a little noisy, they're right there too, so, uh, might be something to think about at some point. Um, Linden Park, the pond, Kent, where's, we haven't talked about that for, I'm curious if.
Yeah, no.
Still looking this year, or?
Still on the radar, yeah. Our focus has been delivering Century Avenue and working through everything on that front, and then we, we've moved on to the pavement management program, you know, as we've basically have been developing two projects in parallel here, you know, to determine which one was gonna, we were gonna proceed with. The other one, if somebody were aware of, is the, uh, the roadway into, uh, T. D. K. and, and Upana and, you know, working with Miles on that, whether that was gonna be a reality this year. Sounds like, uh, he's gonna pursue grant monies next year on that front and, and work to, uh, deliver that with those two, uh, businesses. So we're moving on to the pavement management program and, uh, we'll get that out and underway and then we'll be designing, we've actually made pretty good headway on the, uh, the pond design right now over the winter months, so it won't take too long. Once we, uh, I imagine we'll order the public hearing come midsummer and then, uh, bid it probably September, October timeframe and for contractor to do that excavating in November, December.
Um, somebody had asked me about brighter lights. They saw the new lighting that was done up around the school as project, the L. E. D. lighting and thought that lighting, like, this person works at three A. M., so coming down Adams or Fifth and stuff, maybe some lighter lighting could be coming there and, uh, the L. E. D. And I had mentioned that we're actually having a study done, uh, with.
Amoresco.
Yep, we met, you know, all the staff met with Amoresco probably a month, month and a half ago and, and then, uh, uh, engineering staff and, and utility staff just met with Amoresco again last week. And to, uh, I guess dig into the, the L. E. D. street lighting aspect of their initial audit and, and how that can be approached and, and some of our thoughts and, uh, what we feel they need to address if they're gonna start to develop a project for the city. So what I see happening now is, uh, you know, reviewing Amoresco's process to deliver energy performance contracts, taking that to resource allocation committee, getting feedback from that group with street lighting being the focus of that effort. You know, there might be other things that could be tied to that ultimately, but we'll start with street lighting and then bringing that to council.
Kind of funny, some people want less light. Some people want more light.
His, his comment was with kids, you know, with school and stuff like that, so, but, yeah, there's definitely.
Trust me, we've learned on the L. E. D. front over the last three years, yeah, some people want more, some people want less, and it all depends on where the lights are sighted, definitely.
Another thing with the brewery, you know, um, again, this was something that somebody had asked and I brought up at an earlier meeting, but if you're going north on Highway fifteen and you get to the, that little cutout for people to be able to get on to Echo Drive and out, but if you're, um... But their concern was that since you can't, if you're going north, there's no entrance into the brewery, that people might try to make like a U-turn to get back to, I think it's Brown Street and, um, there's no turn lane, so.
And it's, it's intentional, obviously, it's, it's access control and you want to limit movements, but I think what we can, you know, with the brewery going online here now is have a, I did bring it to Mendat's attention. They are, they are aware of a brewery and a traffic generator going into that spot, more so than that, what's been there in the past and, you know, later evening traffic movements and such. And like you say, Steve, you don't want people making, or people getting into habit of making a back movement in that area, so I'll bring it to Mendat's attention again and have a conversation with them, see if they're willing to at least probably mo- take a monitor approach to it and then, yeah, see what happens.
Well, they had a lot of traffic when W. C. I. was there.
Yeah, you're right, years ago, no doubt, Gary, and I think they'll be.
Obese.
I would hope they'd be fine and people aren't, I've been noticed over the years, people making that U-turn movement. It's only been a couple of times over the years I've noticed somebody doing that.
Headed south, people blow through that painted median.
Yeah.
All day long, you know, it'd be nice if they'd extend it a little bit, if that's their intention, you know, people don't respect the paint, but they would respect the four-inch curb.
No doubt. And that might be, you know, sometimes you gotta watch what you ask for from Mendat, you know, they might make the access control more restrictive, you know, if they sit down and analyze it, so, yeah.
Which on the north end of that, I think they should, shouldn't they? I mean, because it's, a lot of, that's dangerous, people whipping around going north, coming towards you, as you're going south, people are taking a left, you can't see.
Oh, I would agree, yeah, there's some poor decisions being made there, yeah, and which you could eliminate with a raised median.
Yeah.
All of them take a look at it, get, get it on the radar.
And then, uh, Matt, you had sent out something that Hutch Utilities was kind of raised the question about maybe having, uh, changing the charter to allow someone from outside city limits to serve.
Yeah, actually, it was me that brought it up.
Okay.
Um, yeah, I, I just think that, uh, I approached a couple charter members and, you know, it, it's just so hard to, you know, get, uh, people to be on these commissions and we have a lot of people that live just outside the city that are actually business people in town that would make real good commissioners or even to serve on some of the other boards too. I know some of them do let, you know, people that aren't residents, but I just think that that would be something that I told them that I'd like them to look at.
A couple of things, and I think I mentioned this, especially with Utilities, is one thing to keep in mind, realize obviously it's an asset of the city and it's, their main focus is Hutchinson, but they do serve communities outside of Hutchinson. You know, so that's just something to keep in mind. In a lot of cities, this obviously isn't unique for us in Hutchinson, a lot of cities are faced with the same problem of finding people to volunteer for committees and, you know, one of the things, whether, you know, they, they still want to tie it somewhat back to the city, but they've gone to the route of, you know, if you own property or own a business in town, you know, make me eligible, because we have, uh, several business owners that don't in town, but they own a business in town who aren't eligible. So there's, I think that's, there's room for discussion and I believe it's, it is a charter issue, right? Because I think the charter currently doesn't allow it.
Charter spells out who can be on the, uh, Utilities Commission, so.
It's obviously definitely a conversation piece for one of the upcoming charter commission meetings, so I would just.
And that is one of the only commissions that is a paid position too, so.
That's incredibly important, and so I would, I would just make the suggestion that we don't limit it by property ownership, you know, you want a good person and they've got to review and make suggestion and it's gotta come to the, the mayor makes it and the council has to approve it, so.
No, and that's fine, and that's.
And actually, when Congressation would, Mark, you know, I, I was kind of throwing it around, because like when I was first on the fire department, you had to be within a mile of the fire station, then it went to two miles. Well, then, you know, we kept getting, now it's in our fire district, you have to be in our fire district to be on the fire department. Well, I was kind of throwing this, kind of figuring out how the qualifications could be in, you know, and I asked Mark, maybe we can make it that they have to be a, uh, what did I say? Um, they had to buy power from the utilities, you know, or be a paying customer to the utilities or, you know, and so I don't know, Mark was throwing.
There's a lot of different ways that we can approach it and it's something we'll have to sit down and try to analyze and.
Okay. We're thinking about it. Uh, the last thing, Deb's been sitting here, I don't know if you have anything to share, you know, as far from the ministerial association or?
Well, I hadn't planned on it. You'll be getting a letter.
Okay. Well, that's good, just, I knew there was a meeting and didn't know if the communication or not, so, thank you, that's all.
I'm glad you sat all the way through this meeting.
I thought maybe you wanted to say.
Are, are you one of the people that are gonna attend? I want to be a city council member on Thursday?
Um, actually, I'm retiring.
Good, now you got plenty of time.
Unfortunately, I will not be living here.
Well, congratulations on your retirement.
Thank you.
You and Paul.
Uh, he's just moving.
Matt, what do you have for us?
Just to touch on that, obviously, just a last reminder that, you know, so you want to be elected official workshop is Thursday night at five. Um, there's still time to sign up if anybody's interested. Right now, I've got five people that I'm going to convince to not run for office like last time, so, no. I think last time we had six and none of them ran, but, uh, we've got five signed up, which is, uh, which is great to see and said it's, it's three hours, or at least it was three hours last time and it was well-used, so, um, but, yeah, if you're still interested, there's still time to sign up, just either call admin or send me an email. Um, I know we had posted on Facebook yesterday, but Mendat was gonna do the signal light up by South Grade Road and Highway fifteen. Because of the weather, that got moved back, I just got an email, it got moved back to tomorrow. Um, they're gonna be doing that and then, I know this is mainly for Main Street businesses, but I think I mentioned this about a month ago, there is, there's gonna be an accessibility workshop coming up for, on May twenty-second, eight to, eight A. M. to ten A. M. at the Event Center. We kind of talked about eighty-eight and stuff and I was being pulled on by Chamber with some help from staff, our own staff and state staff, so, that's it, don't mind.
Thanks, Matt. Um, give a little plug for the Event Center, um, the Senior Center, I should say, they are having a murder mystery on Saturday night. Um, this is the second one they've had now, um, it's, uh, Murder at the Hutchinson Zoo, so.
Go for Campfire?
That's gonna go on Saturday night, so there are still tickets available, um, so if anybody wants to go, just have to let September know. Um, Morgan, as long as you're here, you can come up and introduce yourself. Morgan wants to be on the Public Arts Commission, so.
Can I do me tonight?
Well, as long as you're here, you can kind of tell us about yourself, so we can put you on the board.
Um, Morgan Baum, nine twenty-five, Second Avenue Southwest, Hutchinson, um, one of those purple roads, by the way. And also somebody who can hear everything that is ever done on River Song Stage, so, um, I would like to be on the Public Arts Commission. Um, I'm an, I'm an artist business owner in the county, although not in city limits. I, um, I'm very involved with the Hutchinson Center for the Arts. I serve on the Minnesota Citizens for the Arts Board as a lobbyist, um, for federal, for state and federal funds to come to Minnesota for the arts. Um, and I regularly work on other arts projects like the Minnesota Pottery Festival, River Song, I'm their stage manager and, um, so I've only missed one year out of the ten. Um, I'm really excited about Blues Travelers, even though I did have to look up their music. Sorry. I know Chad just had a shiver, that might have disqualified me.
Well, Morgan is my high school classmate, so I know exactly how old she is and she should, just based on her age, know who Blues Traveler is.
I have terrible taste in music.
Maybe, no, never mind.
No, I really, I love the arts in our community and I not only want to see more, but I want to see more community engagement in it, and I think the Arts Commission's a really good way to do that.
Hey, Eddie, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll have that on the next agenda.
Yeah, we'll put that on the next agenda, nobody has any objections. Oh, ready?
Speaking of the arts, I noticed that there's some sculptures there, new.
They're coming in now, that's right, thanks for mentioning that, yeah, they're kind of filtering in a little bit here and, uh, the winning people's choice, um, was Dreams Take Flight.
Oh, mm-hmm.
The sculpture at the, uh, library, so, uh, we assembled the votes from the leader online to, people could vote on the Public Arts website and we had the boxes by the sculptor, sculptures, as well as a box down here in City Hall that last week and so put them all together and that was the winning one, so.
How many votes did you get?
Uh, there was about a hundred and. There was about a hundred and sixty, so, together.
So the sculptures are coming in, you know, typically, they were always done kind of like all together. Now they're coming in bits, or what?
Yeah, it, it'll be in May here. Before, we tried to coordinate it with the artists and have a reception, but that got difficult. Some of them are from out of state, and some might be picking up a piece that was at a different sculpture stroll. And so have to pick that up and move it here. So just providing a little more flexibility, but still within May.
All right. Good. Thank you.
All right. With that, I have nothing else.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Mary, to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Both carried.